Good evening, everyone. It's time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for September 5th, 2017. I'd like to welcome you all this evening. We'll begin this meeting, as we do each meeting, with the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, Councilman Alexander is going to offer our prayer, and Councilman Mayberry is going to lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
Let it be your heart pray. Turned grace to God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful weather that we have in. We pray, dear Lord, for the people all in Texas and surrounding cities and countries that's having all kind of problem. Lord, we just pray tonight will be a blessed night, that we would do everything according to your will, your way. In Jesus' name, I do pray, in every heart, say, "Amen."
Place your flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, united in all, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for us, please, this evening.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Camp.
Present.
Mr. Fennell is absent. Uh, Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. Mayberry.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 6th, 2017 meeting. Okay, have a motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions or corrections, or revisions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. Now's the time of the meeting that we have public recognition on agenda-related items. I would invite you to come forward, introduce yourself, give us your address, if you have something to comment on that's on tonight's agenda. I will tell you, there are two public hearings tonight. One is on the amendment to the Preliminary Master Development Plan for Hunter's Point. The second is for rezoning at 400 Odom Spind Road. If you have comments regarding either of those things, you should wait until those public hearings. But right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is open. Okay, and I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. And when we move along to Mayor's comments, I will begin by offering a resolution this evening. This month is National Recovery Month, and to that, we are going to recognize, I'm going to ask members of the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition and the Sumner County Recovery Court to come forward while I present this proclamation. Come over here, wherever you want to get to.
No, shortest people in the truck.
So, this is a proclamation that says, "Whereas mental and/or substance use disorders affect communities nationwide, yet with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. And whereas, over 288,000 people across Tennessee receive publicly-funded behavioral health services each year to treat mental and/or substance use disorders. And whereas, Sumner County is fortunate to have a caring community and abundant resources, including Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition, Recovery Court of Sumner County, and many treatment providers and recovery groups which help people achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas, through National Recovery Month, people become more aware and recognize the signs of mental and/or substance use disorders, and understand their impact on individuals, families, and communities. And whereas, National Recovery Month delivers the important message that behavioral health is essential to one's overall wellness, raises awareness of these diseases, and educates communities of the resources that are available. And whereas, evidence has shown that prevention and effective treatment have helped many recover, we are able to celebrate a substantial decline in alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and cocaine use in our region. And whereas, there has been an increase in abuse of heroin and prescription opioids in Sumner County, we must acknowledge this and resolve to continue our work toward a healthier, drug-free community. And whereas, through the observance of National Recovery Month, we will continue to work to improve the lives of those affected by mental and/or substance use disorders, and acknowledge the influences of all organizations and individuals who work to break the chains of these disorders. Now therefore, I, Page Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, do ask the citizens to join me in celebrating this September as National Recovery Month, and call upon our community to observe this month with compelling programs and events to support prevention, treatment, and recovery from mental and/or substance use disorders. So I'm proud to recognize this month, it is very important, and we are so very fortunate that we have strong organizations like the Recovery Court and the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition doing great work in our community and really making a difference. I don't know if either of these organizations would like to speak, I would welcome you to.
Okay. I'll say something. I don't say anything. She doesn't want to say anything. Well, on behalf of the Recovery Court and our Board of Directors, this is, we make, I feel that we do make a tremendous impact in our community. If you've never attended a Recovery Court graduation, I encourage you to do so. It's very, very moving to see these folks who seriously change their lives and impact the lives of their family, and therefore, therefore, the rest of our community by going through and completing their program. And likewise, the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition, we all know the big impact they have in our community as well. So, thank you, Mayor and Council, for recognizing this month.
We are proud to do so, and I will speak on behalf of the Anti-Drug Coalition as well, because I've been on that board for a while. But, Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition started, I don't even know how many years ago now, a decade?
Ten.
About a decade ago. And it was a small organization with very small amount of funding, and it has grown and really reached out to receive some federal assistance, so that we are able to do things in this community that really do make a difference, particularly in the prevention. So I'm very proud of the work that that organization does, and appreciate the staff and other volunteers who make that happen. So, shall we have a photo?
Absolutely.
Here. Shall we get out here where we're not like?
Sure.
And now, I'll move on to Mayor's comments, and I certainly want to bring up, one more time, the tremendous success of the great Gallatin Eclipse Encounter. We talked about it the last work session, but I continue, I even got a handwritten card in the mail today from someone from Ohio who had been here, thanking the City of Gallatin for inviting so many people to share the eclipse with us. And just lovely comments all the way around. Can't again stress how proud I am of our city and of all of our departments that worked so hard to make it such a fabulous event. I think Gallatin represented itself well, and made a grand impression on people from all over the world, as we know. Also, I want to mention some events to you, so that you are aware of some things that are upcoming. Here's my list. The Sumner County Fair is happening this week, it started yesterday, and will continue through Saturday. This Thursday is an American Red Cross Blood Drive at the Civic Center. This Friday is Bill McCord's birthday. Saturday is the Lions Club Grand Fondo Bike Ride, it happens on the square at 7:00 a.m. The Classic Car Cruisin' is at the City Hall Parking Lot from 5:00 until 9:00, again on Saturday. On Monday, which is 9/11, it's the memorial service that we do each year, it starts at 9:00. Also, I want to mention to you that the Chamber of Commerce is having a special remembrance luncheon, and that's at 11:30. And then there's an ice cream social at Morningside of Gallatin that same day. On Tuesday, the 12th, is the grand reopening of the American Legion Post 17 Building. They've been working on that for a long time, and I know they'd appreciate us coming out to celebrate that. On the 14th is the City of Gallatin Employee Benefits Fair, happening in the City Hall Dining Room from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Hats is doing a barbecue fundraiser on Friday, the 15th. The Harvest Moon Soiree for Ball State is also on the 15th. And then on Saturday, the 16th, is the Truck and Tractor Pool. So that's many things coming up in the next few weeks. Fall always seems to be busy, and this fall is no exception. We're moving into the agenda now. I do have some things I'd like to ask if we can move forward, so that maybe we do public hearing one and two, and then move these items up, and they are item number 12, which will become item number three, and then items nine and 10, which will become items four and five. And I request that, because there are representatives, some of whom have traveled quite a distance to be here, so I think it would be considerate to move them up. I don't think there's anything else that involves people from outside of here. Everybody okay with that? Okay. We'll move to the regular agenda now, and the first item is the public hearing on ordinance number 01708-66, and for that, Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is a public hearing in ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amendment to the Preliminary Master Development Plan for Hunter Point on two parcels, and a portion of a parcel totaling 19.38 acres, authorizing the revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, and providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing, so if anybody would like to come up and speak, please do so.
Public hearing is now open. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address, and I would remind you that you are limited to five minutes, so.
I'll make it as quick as possible. My name's Mike Tertuis, I live at 338 Fannis, and I have brought some pictures that are posted here. August 25th, that's Lifelight from Vanderbilt landed in the front of our neighborhood to pick up a critically wounded person that was involved in a pretty big accident between 386 Long Hollow and that intersection. They blocked traffic for quite a long time, and it was just indicative to the issues of traffic that are going on in that area. Go to the next one. These pictures are actually taken from my house, and it's a surprise to see Lifelight there, and certainly appreciate the police and all of your thing they did that evening to kind of keep things going. But, go to the next one. I want to show you an average day coming in that I deal with on my way home. This is from exit 14. This could be today, it could be next week, it could be a month ago. This is what we deal with every single time we try to come home. In the mornings, at 6:00, it's not as bad, usually because it's dark, but the traffic is bad getting out of that neighborhood. And by building, or changing the development to put apartments in, you're going to add 200-plus more cars to this already growing problem. And that's really what I want the City Council to focus on, is do we want to change this development from retail, where we'll have trinkling of cars throughout the day, or do we want to put apartments in where it's going to dump more traffic in a congested area at rush hour in the morning, and rush hour in the evening? And I am completely against it. One of the things that I also want to make sure that we're aware of is that apartment complex is going to have people that come in for a year. They're going to come in, pay rent for a year, they're going to provide to the community, then they're going to move on. My family and the people in my neighborhood have made hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of commitments to live here. My wife has been a schoolteacher for this city for 12 years, for this county. You know, I raise my family here, we're committed to Gallatin, we love Gallatin, and we don't want to see this happen to our neighborhood. This is a quarter mile from my house, and it's only going to get worse. To see Lifelight land in the front of our neighborhood is shocking. It's difficult to explain to a five-year-old why there's a helicopter right down the street, and why we can't get out of our neighborhood because the police have blocked it because of a major accident. So, I would just ask you to remember us that live in Fairway Farms and the adjacent communities about putting a two-bedroom apartment complex right there in the middle of what's already a huge problem. So, I realize some of you have gotten emails supporting and not supporting it, I'm showing you exactly what we deal with every day, and it's only going to get worse. So, I'd appreciate if you declined the motion to change this development to something that it shouldn't be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in this public hearing may do so at this time? Okay, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'm going to declare the public hearing on ordinance number 01708-66 closed. Item number two is public hearing on ordinance number 01708-68, Councilman Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing of an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning at 5.7 acre plus or minus acre parcel land, tax map 149, parcel 033.00 and 033.01, from a agricultural residential district to specific planned district, and approving a preliminary master development plan for Urban Properties Limited Corporation, located at 400 Odom Spind Road, while authorizing revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for effective date. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing is now open. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance, they may come forward at this time. Okay, I see no one who's saying that they wish to speak, so we will declare public hearing on ordinance number 01708-68 closed. We move now to what is item 12 on your agenda, which is Resolution Number R1709-47, and Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution awarding health insurance contract for the City of Gallatin. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, there is a second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is Resolution R1709-47. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. We move now to what is item number nine on your agenda, and for, this is Resolution R1709-43, and Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a State of Tennessee Deferred Compensation Plan Two for 401Ks, Resolution and Participating Employer Agreement, and I'm moved to approve.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Camp. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is Resolution R1709-43. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 10 is Resolution R1709-44, and Vice Mayor Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Tennessee State Employees Deferred Compensation Plan and Trust, 457B Resolution, Participating Employer Agreement. I so move.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is Resolution R1709-44. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It passes unanimously. Now, we'll go back to item number three, which is third reading on ordinance number 01701-3, and Councilman Fennell is not here this evening, so Councilman Hayes, would you take that, please?
Yes, I will. All right, this is ordinance 01701-3. Ordinance amending Article III, Section I of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee Charter as established in Chapter 67 of the Private Acts of 1953, and is amended thereafter regarding eligibility of office and holding other public office. Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion?
May I ask one question?
Certainly.
This may be a Susan question. The person's on City Council, and they are appointed or selected to hold an office, let's say, with some county position, let's say on the Planning Commission, or something of that nature. And if an issue were to arise that affects the city and/or the county, and we're having the vote, and they're having the vote, the person has dual capacities, should they recuse themselves, and so on?
I think you know the answer to that, but that would be yes, if there's any kind of conflict.
So then, that person really becomes ineffective here at the council, and on the committee that they're on, correct? That's involved. Is that, would that be a correct answer?
It could be, yes.
Thank you, that's all I need to know.
Any further discussion? Okay, this is third reading on ordinance, and I should, I guess I should explain for the public's benefit, that this was a change that actually had to go to the legislature, and now it has come back to the council for a final approval, just because the third reading is unusual, and people may not understand that. But this is third reading on ordinance number 01701-3. Ask all in favor to please say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, it passes five to one. Item number four is second reading on ordinance number 01708-63, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is an ordinance. This is an ordinance to vacate right-of-way on Douglas Bend Road. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance number 01708-63. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item five is second reading on ordinance number 01708-67, Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance amending the Gotham Municipal Code, Chapter 12, Section 12-11, by the addition of language in reference to the discharge of firearms within the city limits of Gotham. I so move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance number 01708-67. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It passes unanimously. Item six is second reading on ordinance number 01708-69, Councilwoman Love.
Thanks, Mayor. This is an ordinance approving vacation sale and transfer of approximately 29,619.8 square feet of Airport Road right-of-way from the City of Gallatin to Henry Hollerman. I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Camp. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I might say this is with the dollar figure on it, an amount of $13,328.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? This is second reading on ordinance number 01708-69. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number seven is first reading on ordinance number 01709-70, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our ordinance appropriating $578,255 for a purchase of a fire rescue truck, a new fire rescue truck. And I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Vice Mayor Overton. That opens the floor for discussion. Chief Williams, I do have one question about this. I think that this includes the $180,000 that we previously allocated, so I think the amount should actually be $398. So, should we amend that at this point?
Yes.
Is that okay? It's motion, motion to amend, Councilman Hayes?
Yeah, motion to amend.
Okay, second by Vice Mayor Overton. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Okay, opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll go back to the original motion, which was approval of the first reading on ordinance number 01709-70. Is there any further discussion on it?
I just need to disclose that my son is a fireman, although I think this is a great idea.
How do you really feel? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Does pass unanimously. Item eight is first reading on ordinance number 01709-71, Councilman Mayberry.
Yes, ma'am. This is an ordinance amending Article III, Section I of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee Charter as established in Chapter 67 of the Private Acts of the year I was born, 1953, and is amended thereafter to establish term limits for the offices of Mayor, District Alderman, and Alderman at Large. And before I make a motion to put it on, to approve, I have voted against this every time it's come before this council, and out of 12 items, I got selected with this one, and I will vote no on this one as well, so motion to approve.
Okay, motion for discussion from Councilman Mayberry, and I should have done better with Angela about who was assigned what to whom. And there is a second by Vice Mayor Overton, which does open the floor for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Just clarifying, Susan, this might be yours too. The way this thing works is this, if I understood it correctly, all the other times I voted against it. Of course, my definition of a term is similar to the governor's. You know, you serve two terms, or eight years, and then you leave, okay? In this particular item, if a councilperson, either in a district or at large, they serve their eight years, and they say, "Well, I really enjoy Tuesday nights, I don't want, I don't, I enjoy being with my friends, and I think I'm doing a good job." So, what they can do is say, "Oh, I'll run for either at-large, if it's available, or at a district, if it's available." That will still give continuity up here. Now, is that what this says?
That's correct, except when one, um...
12 years.
Thing I like to say, 12 years, so three terms, instead of two terms.
12 years, but even after that.
You're correct, you can run for a district councilman, and then, after those three terms, you could run.
So, you're really not termed out, you just, you can just change, and still come up here, and if you're elected, which you'd have to anyway, then, if we did not have term. So really, you can play that if you want to, and continue on for another 12 years. So it's kind of a hybrid, in my opinion. Always was a hybrid term, rather than a pure term. That's all. Thank you.
Has this already gone to the legislature?
Yes, remember we discussed the last meeting, that because there was a confusion about which election it would be voted on by the constituents, we needed to send it back through this next session, so we could specify the election we want it voted upon.
So we're just, we're voting the very same thing we did the last time.
Yes, ma'am.
Except we are specifying it would be the November election, because that's when the municipal elections are held, and we want it to be on the ballot when they're municipal elections. That's when people are going to be out voting for municipal offices. Otherwise, it's exactly the same. And I'm going to vote no again, I myself, because I appreciate the knowledge of some of our people that have been on the council for quite a lot, longer than me, that know their stuff. So, I just feel like that the people should be able to say if they like having us here or not.
Any more discussion? All right, this is first reading on ordinance number 01709-71. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
It passes, I think, 4-2, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, 4-2. We've already covered item nine and item 10, so we go to Resolution, item number 11, which is Resolution R1709-46. Vice Mayor Overton, will you take that?
Absolutely, Mayor. This is a resolution establishing maximum maximum amount to the City of Gallatin place towards the vehicle replacement grant, and I so move.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Overton.
Sure.
Second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, this is Resolution R1709-46. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. We've already covered item number 12, so that concludes the regular agenda and moves us now to other business. If there's other business to come before this council, I would ask that you bring it forward, please. Anyone have anything? I have a road closure. Want me to do that? This is a road closure for the Station Camp Run that they have. It is, it's, the location of the event is the Station Camp Greenway, from the Douglas Clark House to the Station Camp Middle School. And the roads that they're asking to have closed are Station Camp Creek at the crossing, and Bison Trail at the crossing, and is from 8:00 a.m. until 9:30 a.m., has all the proper signatures from our department heads and Sumner EMS.
Not approved.
And the date is November 11th, 2017. Have a motion by Councilman Alexander.
Sir.
Second by Vice Mayor Overton. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Does pass unanimously. Is there any other, other business? Bless you. Okay. That takes...
Mayor, I do want to say one thing. I just want to say how much I appreciate the efforts this past Thursday night of a group that got together at the Civic Center. It was a, it was a very, very emotional, very rewarding opportunity, and a lot of people showed up, and I appreciate that. It was a, I forgot what the term was, what they called it, it was a...
Unity in the community.
Unity in the community event.
Well, I heard...
And it was well-attended, and I appreciate everybody that showed up for that.
Well, I heard that you did a fabulous job, as did Chief Bandy and Assistant Chief Rob Ritchie, so, they all, I heard everyone did a great job, and that it was a good event, and I was so sorry I couldn't be there, but, anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to public recognition on non-agent-related items. This is the time of the meeting that people can come forward with concerns that aren't on this evening's agenda. You may do so at this time, introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
My name is Mark Schmidt. I live at 1011 Penin...
I live at 1011 Peninsula Drive. And I am here wanting to discuss...
The cut through. And these, some of these guys that have been here for a while know about this, don't we? Mr. Hayes, you still cut through? Be honest.
I don't, I don't want to interrupt your public comment, but did we not decide, Mr. Rogers, to put those speed bumps back again? Didn't we decide on that a few months ago, six weeks ago or something?
I know that we talked about what different alternatives, but I'm not sure what the latest...
Yeah, I guess it would be appropriate for you to, we'll let you go ahead and speak, but I do think that we have gone down the road to approve that speed bumps be put back in, if that helps you at all.
Well, it may. I'm not sure how far the speed bumps are going to go, though, if we have decided that. But I spent the last six months on this, so I'd like to, like to have the sign to speak. Anyway, Mayor, thank you for, Mayor Brown, thank you for allowing me to speak, city council members, department heads, and residents. This area of the city, Peninsula and Belvedere, is a residential neighborhood. It's not made for the traffic volume that we see. There's no sidewalks if you want to walk your dog, you want to run, you want to ride your bicycle. There's none of that there. There's no curbs out there and there's no trap, very little traffic control. There's three stop, all there is is three stop signs. There's no striping in the streets. So it's just a, it's kind of just wide open out there. There's no, really not too much control out there. So what I did, I took it on myself to do a, a traffic study. Now, I'm not an engineer. I don't have a degree. But I do sit at the corner, Peninsula and Harris, and for one-hour increments during the day, on random days and random hours, I did a traffic count. So every car that came through that traffic sign, I made a tick mark on a piece of paper. That don't take an engineer to do that, okay? So what I discovered, and it's on this page, to go to this page, what I discovered is from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., 72 cars passed by my house in an hour. From 7:00 to 8:00, 144 cars passed by my house in one hour. You can see all the way it goes up to three to four, 221 cars passed my house in one hour. For a total, in one day, 1,682 cars passed my house. And I dare anyone that has that kind of volume in front of their house in a residential neighborhood. This is facts. I counted. This happens every day out there, every day. Not only does that happen, this is two things that I discovered in this survey that I, that a regular survey or traffic study wouldn't discover. There is an average of four cars an hour, for an hour, that blow through that stop sign, for an hour. That's 52 in a day. 52 traffic violations at one sign, one. There's three signs there. If they don't stop at that one, they're sure as heck not going to stop at the other two. That's 156 traffic violations on that street each day. That's fact. I see it. I've seen it. Also, this was very interesting. I was coming off of 40 one day. So I wonder how my GPS would route me to the Verizon store, last page, okay? It routed me down Peninsula Drive, down Nichols Off State Highway. It routed me down Peninsula Drive to the Verizon store. I mean, we can't change that. I don't know how you change that, but that's fact. There's a screenshot. That screenshot. So, with that said, I come with some solutions also. Make Belvedere Drive from Gallatin Road to Peninsula a cul-de-sac. Belvedere from Gallatin Road to Peninsula, Gallatin Road to Peninsula, just that little short shoot, make out of the cul-de-sac. That'll stop it. But that's pretty radical and I understand that. Larger police presence to stop the, the traffic violations. There has been a little bit more in the last couple of weeks. I see them every now and then out there, but the best way is a, I don't think it'll stop the traffic, but it will stop the speeding. Speed bumps, we talked about this. You mentioned that. But if you're going to put them out there, put them all the way through, all the way, all the way on Peninsula, all the way on Belvedere. Because just those three speed bumps on Peninsula, when you come off of Gallatin Road, doesn't really help. And the fourth solution, accept it. It's what it is. It's a major thoroughfare. Accept it, curb it, put sidewalks, traffic lights, stripe it, fix it the way it should be fixed. You're going to, if we're going to accept it, fix it, fix it right. Four things I discovered, we got out there excessive noise, 1,682 vehicles passing. Now, that figure there is in 13 hours. That's not 24. That's just 13 hours that I counted. So it's well over 2,000. I didn't count, I didn't count all day and all night. The noise, the volume, the speed, it's all there and I think just we need to address it somehow. I don't know how.
Mr. Schmidt, let me just share a little bit of information.
Sure.
As I recall, and I'm sorry our city engineer's not with us this evening for exact information, but we'll follow up with you, but I think we did a survey of residents again within the last six months or so, and there was a majority that did wish that the speed bumps be replaced. We did do a traffic study not too long ago, a couple of months ago, and it actually showed 2,508 cars per day, so you're exactly right. I certainly admire your diligence with this and feel terrible that you felt it necessary to do that. And the interesting thing from the traffic study that we did is that the, there were more cars speeding, although it's still a very low percentage based on the number. It's up, it's only 2%, but that means 55 cars.
How do they determine? And I'm not questioning, I just...
Right. It's a covert radar that counts the cars and detects the speed. So, and depending on where it is, too, you know, people can increase and decrease speeds depending on where that's placed. And, and, and I was just going to say about the stop sign. I know with enforcement, the thing with a stop sign is, is guess what? People stop when they see a policeman out there.
Exactly.
So, but you're right, increased enforcement does help. But I, I, I think that we have some help on the way related to that, but I'll have the city engineer follow up.
Well, I've already talked to, is it Aaron Hickson? I forget the city engineer's name.
Nick Tuttle.
Yes, he was busy and didn't have time and I understand that. So he sent me to Aaron. I talked to him about four weeks ago and presented him with the same documentation.
Yeah, I've got it as well and...
That you have.
Yeah.
On the, on the disregard in the stop sign, I was really lenient with that. I mean, I wasn't, I mean, you know, you didn't have to come to a complete...
They slowed down, you let them go.
I let them go. I mean, I'm talking about the people that just disregard, like that sign is for somebody else, not for me type guy.
Yeah.
And, and, and one other thing before I, I didn't mean to cut you off, but one other thing that I have here is the vehicle, every vehicle that you will see on Gallatin Road passes my house every time. There's pickup trucks, there's cars, tractor trailers, 18-wheelers pass my house. And if I can, I didn't know we had a visual arts thing here, but I do have, if you want to see pictures, I got pictures. 18-wheelers passing my house, a residential neighborhood.
Wow. I'll also share with you that in half...
In a residential neighborhood?
In the first six months of 2017, the Gallatin Police Department issued more citations than they did in the entire year of 2016.
Okay.
So they are working on it.
Well, I understand. This is just what I found, what I've seen.
I understand.
If we could work on that, I'd appreciate it.
In the first six months of 2017, the Gallatin Police Department issued more citations than they did in 16, in 17, more than 16.
From 15 to 16, it went down 32 percent.
I'd like to address a comment that we were, we were discussing previously. Buck Rogers, City of Gallatin, Assistant City Engineer. We did repave Peninsula Drive back about two to three years ago, took out the existing humps that were there. There was some interest in the neighborhood to put those back, so we did bring that back to council. And we have a work order that we've sent to Public Works to reinstall those speed humps.
Yay, thank you.
Just to clarify.
Now, I think they're probably just the reinstallation of those that were there previously and so we might discuss, we might discuss further his suggestion that we carry that through the subdivision better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Welcome you to do so at this time. I see no one, so I'll say that public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now closed. And that will take us to the end of this meeting. Shall anyone wish to offer an emotion? Motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, everyone. We look forward to seeing you again back here. Have a lovely evening.